Good evening, folks. Thank you all for everyone being here tonight. It's 5:32, so we'll open the meeting. And we have a forum established. If I can get a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll move.
Sorry.
All in favor? Aye. Or opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Superintendent, do we have some delegations? Recognizations and awards?
Yes, sir, we do. I'm gonna...some of these are very extensive, so I'm gonna read these first. We have everything from art winners to DECA winners to finance winners. This is a good list. We'll start with our students. Of course, I think everybody's aware of Mr. Tim Klaigus and what he does. I'm not sure if Tim here. Okay. What Tim does with the high school students who get into finance with the DECA program. We have some recognition for these students. Two sets of recognitions in the...I'll go down here and read them. I expect everybody to hear. The International Career Development Conference. Steve, I believe this was down in Florida, was it?
Yes, sir.
And they went down there for almost a week and competed. His team, him and his team did, his students. The International Career Development Conference, third place winner when they went down to Florida. This was the only school in Alabama to place. It was a virtual business team, restaurant management. Andy Nye. And Albie Horton? And Crandall Hinton. Those three students placed, only team in Alabama to place in that international competition. In the Alabama Finance Challenge, there was 520 teams. Mr. Klaigus also represented and took them down there to Tuscaloosa, I believe. Is that right, Steve?
Yes, sir.
520 teams from across the state competed in the first round by taking on online tests. The top 24 teams are invited to the University of Alabama for the state championship. Teams from Uphaula High School were Team One, John Lane, Harley Hicks, Andy Nye, and Lane Mallett. They placed fifth at that competition. Team Two, Darby Lane, Shelby Tyler, Sidney Dowling, and Crandall Hinton. Team Three, Dalen Pugh, Kendri Gosha, Zach Barnes, Delaney Earl. They were in Team Three. Our school finished in this order. Brookwood took first and second place. Hoover took third. Mountain Brook fourth. And Uphaula fifth. So, we're in some pretty good company there. We'll get those certificates to those students. I'm not sure if...Steve, is Coach Klaigus here?
Uh, no, sir. Have a seat.
Okay. Did you want to say a few words on his part for Dan and his 11 years?
Be glad to. Just on behalf of Coach Klaigus, a word of thanks for all the support and encouragement over his 10 years here. You know, certainly, we have been very fortunate in what he's been able to do in making and taking young men and our young boys and turning them into young men. So, thank you for his opportunity here.
Steve, also, Mike Henry with our head basketball coach after 10 seasons.
Same with Mike. You know, we look at Mike, we're looking at someone who's got a .367 and .142 record throughout his career. We were talking the other day and trying to count up the number of young men that went on to play for him at the next level, and we stopped at about 26 in his 10 years here. So, for all that Mike has done, we certainly appreciate his efforts and, again, helping to mold and make some mighty fine citizens in our community.
And we'll get them their certificates. Steve, I want to back up. Do you or Mr. Beez want to say a few words about Tim and his long, successful run with DECA and our students?
We probably could both talk most of the night about that program, Mr. Beez. You know, when we look back at the last 20-plus years, that program is not just recognized as the top in our state, one of the top, but certainly one of the top in our region. And as you've seen, just from what you've read there, is recognized across our country. So, you know, people want to know how to do a marketing program. This is one of the programs where we get a lot of calls from. You know, they look to us to kind of, as the beacon in the night, as it were. So, really, really proud of Tim, really proud of our kids and for all that they're able to accomplish and consistently accomplish.
It's great for Uphaula City Schools, all of these gentlemen that we just referenced. And we thank them.
Mr. Tyler, if I could step in? I'm a product of Mr. Klaigus, Tim Klaigus's DECA program. And I could easily tell you, I would not be sitting in this seat here today if it were not for Tim Klaigus. He was a crossroads teacher for me. And I just know that over the years, his contributions, his commitment, his excellence has really raised the bar and the standard for what Uphaula City Schools expects out of their students and what Uphaula City Schools students can achieve. So, Mr. Tim Klaigus, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Captain. Right now, Carla Douglas Randolph. Carla? Is Carla here?
Right here.
Okay. There you go. I don't know how I missed you. We have a little recognition for Carla. Of course, we were talking today, and I said, "Now, you were on the state championship team," all right? You said two. So, I wanted to try to do two. And might have some familiar faces in the audience, too, that might remember that. Also, this is a certificate of recognition presented to Carla Douglas Randolph, Auburn University Montgomery Department of Athletics, Hall of Fame Basketball. Congratulations, Carla.
Thank you.
Should've taken my glasses off. Pat Thomas is not here, but we have Amanda Burkhal. Amanda is with Kelly Services Educational Staffing. And I believe you have something, an award that...I don't know if she's here tonight, but you have an award. Do you want to talk about that award?
Yeah, well, every year, we have what we call our Substitute Teacher of the Year. We provide all the substitutes from here in this school district here in Uphaula. And we like to recognize our substitutes. And this is one way we do that. We collect nominations from the principals. And we have 16 school districts, mind you. So, we collect all those nominations, and we go through them and submit them to corporate, and they choose State Substitutes of the Year for all 35 states that we service in the U.S. And of all the school districts that we cover in all of Alabama, which includes Montgomery, Birmingham, and Huntsville, we had the winner this year in all of the substitutes in Alabama. And that was Ms. Patricia Thomas.
Patricia Thomas.
And she was nominated by Uphaula Primary School. So, we were excited for her to win that. We got to present her an award at the primary school the other day, and that was nice.
Well, teaching's talking up. It's second.
Yes. It is. I don't envy that job at all, because you don't know what you're walking into from day to day. It's a different classroom every day. So, I don't envy that job at all, but she does an excellent job over there at the primary school. And it was awesome to see them. All the teachers were waiting for her, and we surprised her and everything. And as soon as she walked into the room, everybody started clapping for her, and she was shocked. So, you can tell they really appreciate the job she does.
She's great. We've got great teachers, but it's nice to know we have the Alabama Substitute Teacher of the Year.
Yes.
That's by Kelly Staffing. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
I'll let you...Well, Mitzi, I guess we'll hold on to this. Is that good?
Probably give it to him.
Yeah.
Okay. And, let's see. Amber with the 4H. You want to come up and say a little something about what we have for some students on 4H?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Tyler. Thank you so much for coming tonight. I have some very special awards to hand out, and I think these are absolutely wonderful. They've done a great job on putting these together. Our kids have done a great job this year. I'm the 4H agent. My name is Amber Maribault. I'm the 4H agent for Barber and Ustle Counties. And this year, I have been allowed and invited in to Uphaula Elementary School to do programs with fourth grade. We've done a project called Step Up to Leadership, where we've identified some of the key skills needed to become a leader. But at the meantime, we have also given them some opportunities to go a little bit further with their learning, do some competitive events. 4H competitive events are very intense, very intense. In fact, my office has been decorated by their efforts all year long, throughout the year. One month at a time, one project at a time. My conference table has been filled with projects, and it's been wonderful to see all the effort and time that our families have committed to 4H. It's very exciting to see those things. It's good to see some parents tonight. I actually have not met all of my parents yet of my 4Hers, so it's nice to see some of you and put some parent faces with some youth faces. It's a good thing. So, I'd like to go ahead and call out the names of all of our youth who participated in 4H projects this year, competitive events. And our first award will go to Mr. Luke Paget for Blocks Rock Competition at Junior Level. He won first place in the club. He also won second place for the whole county.
Thank you.
Good job.
Congratulations. Great.
Good job. Proud of you, buddy. My second award tonight will go to Ms. Megan Powell for 4H Blocks Rock Project, junior level. She wins first place in the club and third place in the county. Good job, Megan.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Our next certificate will go to Ms. Lacey Johnson for her participation in 4H Blocks Rock, junior level. She wins first place for the club and participation for the county level event. Good job, Lacey.
Here's Mitzi. Thank you.
Our next certificate will go to Mr. Braden Benefield for his participation in 4H Blocks Rock, junior level, first place for the club. Good job. Our next certificate will go to Ms. Rachel Webb for her participation in the World I See, junior level. She wins first place for the club and first place for the county. Rachel, would you get your photograph real quick to show everybody since you brought it?
Okay.
There we go. Hey, you want to hold that up?
Okay.
All right. Hold your certificate in one hand. There you go. And I don't know that she made it tonight, but our next certificate will go to Ms. Catherine Ty. Is she naked here tonight?
Her mom wasn't sure when.
Wasn't sure, okay. For the World I See, junior level. She won second place for the club and third place for the county. Let's give her a round of applause. Okay, our next award goes to Mr. Austin Avery. Is he here tonight? No, he's not here tonight. For his 4H Extreme Birdhouses, junior level competition, first place for the club and second place for the whole county. It was Batman-themed. It was really cool. Please give him a round of applause. I know she's here. Okay, our next award will go to Ms. Sierra Quarles. Come on up, Sierra. For her Extreme Birdhouses Project, junior level, she won first place for the club and also participation for the county. Good job, Sierra. All first.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good job. Our next certificate will be awarded to Ms. Annie Wingate for her participation in the What Would You Build Project. She won first place for her club and first place for the county. Let's get her project. Okay, excellent. I'll help with this one.
Turn around here to Dan.
Dad first. Project.
Okay. You gotta learn to shut up.
Good job. All right. And our final certificate tonight is presented to Ms. Jade Turley for her participation in Alabama Quilters, junior level. She won first place for the club and third place for the whole county.
Let's see. Do you want to get a picture right here?
Mrs. Ben.
Okay. Is that good? And then we'll get one over here. This lot stuff.
Excellent.
Very good.
All right. All the hard work that the kids put into it this year, it really makes my job worth it to see how much the kids really have put into these projects. And I just wanted to remind everybody that on Thursday, we'll be doing the revival celebration. And so, those of you who received a certificate tonight will also get some recognition at that ceremony on Thursday for revival. So, parents might want to kind of be warned. And also, if you won first or second place for the county, just a quick reminder, we are sponsoring you to represent Barber County 4H at Regional Roundup in Troy, June the 10th and 11th. We would love to see you there. Thank you so much.
Congratulations to everyone. It's nice to have these kind of recognitions.
So, our recognitions and awards, do we have any delegations? Any delegates?
Oh, yes, we do. Mo, right. Mr. Art?
Mr. Tyler, do you want to do the artwork?
Oh, yeah. Let us get the artwork first. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mo.
Sorry.
We're gonna get you a hand in my glasses if you came up here. Right now, the music and arts. Mitzi came up with this idea, well, three years ago, Mitzi.
This is our third.
Yeah. This is our third year doing music and arts and awarding the art winners. Of course, the music, if you come to the gym at the high school, and if you haven't seen Music and Art in our school, it's a wonderful event, and I encourage everyone to come out. It's in March of each year. A totally packed house, and it just, it shows the support that our students get for the arts and music from our board. They've never wandered from that. They made it clear that art and music was important. And where other systems have either reduced or closed that down through loss of funds, Uphaula City Schools has seen fit to continue to promote that and will continue to do that. So, I asked Mitzi, when I...each year, I choose a school, or one per grade level, I think, no, one per school. And I called her this year, as I got to looking at the art, and I said, "Mitzi, what are my guidelines? What are my boundaries? What can or can't I do?" So, you can do anything you want to do. So, this is tough. So, we have a winner from each grade level, and it just displays these wonderful talents of these students. We hang them up, as you see, the first two years are hanging up out in the hallway there. We'll continue to do that, and they'll be here for as long as the parents allow us to let them hang here. And I had one person tell me, "They'll hang there until she graduates," and then I'll take it with me. We want to recognize these students. It's a wonderful program, and we have the great arts and music unlike any other in our area or in the state. So, I'm gonna call your name, and we'll get a picture with Mitzi and the parents. I guess if you want to come up or take that picture. We'll start with our pre-k. And we have Adrian Solorio, pre-k. Adrian? Mitzi, where do you want us to?
I'll just come in.
Yeah, maybe you need to... How are you doing? That's a beautiful picture. There you go. There you go. That is...we hold on to it. And in kindergarten, Sadie Trailer. Sadie?
How are you? Congratulations.
I will say, after the first year, I told Mitzi to ask the art teachers, I did not want to see names. So, when I go and select, I don't know...I know the grade level, but I don't know the name. All the names on the art pictures are covered up, and I just, I love color. Of course, the art teachers conveyed that to the students, but it doesn't matter. These are wonderful drawings of these children, and what these children have done. In grade...first grade is Jacy Kell. Kell?
Jacy.
Okay. Bean is here, our art teacher. In second grade, Trinity Bather. Trinity? Darius? Not here? Third grade? Well, that's what his looks like. And that is nice. And in fourth grade, Ben Strickland. Ben?
Man, that is...congratulations, man. That is beautiful. Go right here, so your mom can get a picture. And grandma.
Jordan?
Yes, sir. That's sixth. That's sixth, the last one was fifth.
I'm sorry, Jordan. You were fifth grader. I'm so sorry. I decided to elevate you too quick. Graduate you too quick. Kimberly Henry, fifth grade. Kimberly? Tracy? Macau? Is that right?
Ferry.
Is tenth grade. Congratulations. Let's get this for Mom, then. Yana Ritchie, eleventh grade. And twelfth grade is Shar Williams.
Sharay.
Sharay? Okay.
Luke has his project.
Can we stage a picture?
I want to stand up, Luke, at first, I thought.
Want to tell us about that?
This is why I used to win. I was going to do something, those bottles destroyed, so I just made this in like one morning.
Tell us everything.
Yes, sir. 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 Yes, sir.
to make it possible for those students who live in the north end of this county to come to the U of August City Schools. Thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you, Mo.
Thank you, Mo.
Mr. Erkins came and spoke with me a couple of weeks ago, I think. I spoke to Jesse Warren, who's with our Student Services and Transportation. Jesse, myself, rode out there yesterday to the north end, turned on the 165, and saw exactly what you were talking about, Mo. And then we got to the city limit sign that's clearly, we clearly marked, and went all the way to your church, the church there. And I know I identified five, six, half a dozen or more houses that I could see. Then it goes into a dirt road. Now, we didn't go down the dirt road. But I, I'm not sure of all the agreements. I'm sure I can talk to the board a little bit later. We can look further at that. I'll talk to David Hobd, who's superintendent in Barbara County. I'm not sure what can be done, but I do know where you're talking about. I put my eyes on it. And, you know, I think that's one of our furthest, most stops. Is it, Jesse?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So thank you for bringing it to our attention and making that appeal. And we'll, we'll take, we'll look into it a lot further. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. All right, we have 3A approval of the minutes. 3A is March 17, 2015, approval of the minutes. If I have a motion? Oh, yeah, sure, sure. Okay, we thank all the parents and all the students that were here tonight, here at the board meeting. And of course, all the recognitions and awards that they received. And of course, the delegates, Mr. Mo Erkins. But we move on. So we're going to move to 3A approval of the minutes, March 17, 2015. If I can get a motion?
Some move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Superintendent, your report?
I believe, I'm not mistaken, you're going to go ahead and do your... We've got the superintendent report coming a little bit later. Let's see. Susan, are they doing, is Jim doing his right now, or you want my report?
James Bailey has something.
Okay. Mr. Bailey, on the I Now hosting solution?
Yes, sir, I just wanted to inform the board, and our board policy states that, you know, when we spend certain dollars amount, that I would give, we need to inform the board on what we're doing. And we have the opportunity this year to host our I Now software, which is our student administration. It's called Chalkable now. And it's our student admin software. We currently house it on-site in our tech center. And we're going to have to upgrade those services to meet some of their compliance rules. And it's going to cost us between $25,000 and $30,000. But we have the option to host. And I want to try the hosting solution for the first year with them to see how it goes. And that will cost us $8,400. And if it works, you know, over the course of four years, we basically spend, with them hosting the software, maintaining everything, running the updates for us, the same amount of money as we would if we invested in the hardware and software ourselves. So I just wanted to inform you guys, that's what we want to try to do this year. Instead versus spending, you know, a lump sum, $30,000, just try the $8,400 to see if it works. And if it works, upgrade. If it doesn't, then we'll go back and, you know, upgrade and do what we have to do to house our own software.
Any questions on, for James?
Does it change the platform? Is this chalkable, the same as I Now?
Still same platform. The advantages we, we gain is it's not on-site, it's still backed up nightly off-site. And we do not have to apply any updates or run any, you know, mandatory updates. So it's, it's less man-hours on us, they house it. They're up ninety-nine points some odd percent of the time. So, I mean, just, like I said, I think it's a win-win for us. And I'm willing to try it for one year, just to see what happens.
And there's a financial incentive to do that.
Correct, we spent $8,400 versus upwards $30,000. Any more questions?
One question for James, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. All right, new business, Mr. Superintendent.
It's all yours.
All right. We have 5A, the election of the board president and vice president. Up for election for the president for the Fall City School Board is Mr. Richard Wingate. And for vice president is Jim Calton Jr. So if I can get a motion for the election of Mr. Richard Wingate for the board president for the 2015-2016 term, beginning our next board meeting, June 16, 2015. And the same as vice president, Jim Calton Jr. If I can get that motion in favor of?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Wingate. All right, new business, 5B, Mr. Superintendent.
That's, that's you two, that's counting the compensation.
This is the board compensation issue that comes up every year. And it's because it's at, this is what's termed as the annual part of our school year, where we determine whether or not the school board members are compensated for the services that we provide as a school board. We're entitled to $600 a month. But I believe if you know this school board and you know each member, we have each year declined to accept this payment because we feel as if the service to the community is payment enough. But let me give you an example. Barbara County Schools, they're an elected school board. We're an appointed school board. If you're an elected school board, you have to be paid. And you, and you receive compensation for your service as a school board member. I believe the Barbara County School Board receives $1,000 a month per school board member. So that's $12,000 a year per school board member. And if my math is right, times five, that's $60,000 a year. And then if you assume, or know that all five of us have a five-year term, you times sixty, times five, and if my math is right, that's $300,000. So I just want you to know that being a school board member benefits all of us personally, but it benefits us together as a community because it gives us an opportunity to serve. And if I can get a motion of, from one of the school board members to forego being compensated for this school year, 2015-2016, I'll entertain that motion.
Move, we waive compensation for the 2015-2016 school year.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. New business, 5C.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, our textbook committee. Mr. Warren, you want to say anything about our, about our textbook committee?
Yes, we're looking at appointing our transformation team as our textbook committee for the 2015-16 school year. We'll be adopting science books over the next two weeks. So if you guys want to approve that, we would appreciate it.
5C. Superintendent recommends 5C textbook committee as stated in the agenda. Approval is stated in the agenda?
I'd like to have a motion for 5C.
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Sir, 5, 5D would be our custodial service bid. Bailey, would you like to say something about our custodial? You see it's in front of you all. Any questions for James, or he can tell you this was rebid?
This year, we rebid the custodial services bid, and we had several options in there, as you can see, all the way down to, you know, primary school, elementary school, middle school. We added the option this year to add the high school, if we chose to do so. Different day quarters for the ELC, the high school, the middle school, elementary school, and the primary school. Because we've had some retirements there and, you know, and other things through attrition. We just added the options there. So the motion that you have is to approve the total amount of Edwards cleaning and sweeping service, $235,000, $247, $235,000, $247. And what that includes also is our summer floor cleaning. We opted to lump that in with this also. So that's, that bid is in there also. And Mr. Beasley and I were looking at the numbers. And with this bid and moving personnel around and going with this custodial cleaning bid, we roughly saved $33,000 this year, you know, for employee costs.
That's by adding one of our, another school?
And that's by adding another school and adding some, adding some ground, they'll also, that we will be able to still save $33,000.
And this will include the early childhood?
Early childhood center also.
Any other questions for Mr. Bailey? I have to say, him and Mr. Beasley have looked at this and worked together on this to continue providing services and adding schools to the contracts that we do each year. Commend them for the job they've done, especially with adding more services and saving money. So thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Bailey? On 5E, the, I'm excuse. On 5D, custodial services cleaning bid, superintendent recommends approval as stated in the agenda?
Have a motion?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
On 5E, Mr. Bailey's there because we have our child nutrition bid for milk, bread, and ice cream. You want to say something about that, James?
Just the normal standard bid is this time of year for our services for the upcoming school year. Devolved dairy products was a low bid for the bill for $146,184. On that bid, the bread bid was Flowers Bakery. At $64,172, it's sixty cents. And I think I included a note in there, only one memo, about the ice cream bid. We received no bids for the ice cream. Blue Bell Center response, you know, with their recall, not knowing for sure when they would be able to bid. So at this point, we do not know if we will have any ice cream products and luxuries next year.
I'll have some sagging.
I don't know how to bid this.
Dean, we'll put you on that, though.
It's bad when you can't get our name, and it's bad when you can't get anybody to bid on it.
That is difficult, but...
Any questions? Is the bread bid and the centipede bid, is that in line with what was done in the past?
Any other questions for Mr. Bailey or Dean? Thank you, James. On 5E, our child nutrition bid, superintendent recommends approval as stated in the agenda?
Do you have a motion?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Other's? Motion passes.
5F, you follow high school summer reading addition. And you see the request approved by the BLT at the high school that made the recommendation to me. And if you've read the little paragraph, it looks like some very interesting reading. Our children don't watch the news sometimes, I'm not sure where they're going to get it. But that's, that's, that's sharp. Any questions for Mr. Hawkins, maybe, on 5F, summer reading request? You follow high school. On 5F, you follow high school summer reading addition, superintendent recommends approval as stated in the agenda?
Have a motion?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
5G, student activities and fundraisers. You see listed, you follow elementary. I know Mr. Gerton, Mr. Gertman, is he still here?
Yes, sir.
Oh, there he is. We had a discussion, and he came up with this idea, talked to me about it, just a little incentive package, which I'm, I'm all about. You know, I know, as I've done some of this in the past as a high school principal. When we were doing the graduation exams, Alabama High School graduation exams, and sometimes you dangle that carrot out there, and we're not sure of our results yet. Is that correct? But I tell you, it's a pretty good little day for our students. Anything you want to say about that, or?
No, we're just excited, and we're hoping that the kids are excited. Many of them are, have really been working hard, and we've seen that type of effort. That's the main thing. You got to try hard first before you can get the results, so.
Absolutely.
We hope they want to yield some good results.
And in today's world, it's kind of what's in it for me. And sometimes you work a little bit harder, and it looks like it's a movie. And a little play where, is it a place to go play?
Well, they're just going to do movies and popcorn, and we're going to stop at the park to have lunch.
Okay, all right. Any questions on, you follow elementary activity? You see Admiral Middle School, their activities. Band, dance team, cheer, and their fundraiser. On 5G, student activities, you follow elementary, Admiral Middle School, superintendent recommends approval as stated in the agenda?
Have a motion?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
5H, housing allowance. You see that in front of you? Any questions on 5H? 5H, housing allowance, superintendent recommends approval as stated in the agenda?
Have a motion?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes.
On 5I, addendum to the salary schedule. I know when we were going through some change, I talked to Mr. Hawkins about an interim. We had an interim for our football, which was Dwayne Mock, and an interim for our head boys basketball, which was Jamee Cly. And I'd have to say, sometimes it's, no news is good news. But I know Mr. Hawkins has dealt with him every day, talked to him on one or two occasions how it was going. And Mr. Hawkins, unless I missed something, it seemed like these two gentlemen stepped up and did an admirable job during this transition period. And I'm very proud of those two young, I say young men, they're a lot younger than me. But, and you see right here, board on the adjustment, just for their efforts in carrying us into the transition period. Any questions on 5I? 5I, the addendum to the salary schedule, superintendent recommends approval as stated in the agenda?
Have a motion?
Some move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
5J, personnel. 5J1, resignation of certified personnel. You see in front of you? Any questions? 5J1, resignation of certified personnel, superintendent recommends approval as stated in the agenda?
Have a motion?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
5J2, non-renewal of personnel effective last working day, 2014-15 school year. You see certified and classified. Any questions on those? 5J2, non-renewal of certified and classified personnel effective last working day of 2014-15. Superintendent recommends approval as stated in the agenda?
Have a motion?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
5J3, non-renewal of extended day, 21st century after-school tutorial, Saturday school teachers, interpreters, translators effective 6/30/15. Quite a list. Any questions? 5J3, non-renewal of extended... Five J three, non-renewal of extended day, 21st century after-school tutorials, Saturday school teachers, interpreters, translators effective 6/30/15. Superintendent recommends approval as stated in the agenda.
Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Six J four, non-renewal of supplements. You see there the list, this is what we do every year. Five J four, non-renewal of supplements, superintendent recommends approval as stated in the agenda.
Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Five J five. Tenured certified. Those that had been recommended for tenure, certified personnel, which means they would start their fourth year next year. Any questions? Five J five, tenured certified personnel, superintendent recommends approval as stated in the agenda.
Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Five J six. Non-probationary classified personnel recommended. Any questions? Five J six, non-probationary classified, superintendent recommends approval as stated in the agenda.
Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Five J seven, transfer reassignment of certified and classified personnel effective 2015-16 school year. Any questions? Five J seven, transfer reassignment effective 2015-16 of certified classified personnel, superintendent recommends approval as stated in the agenda.
Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Five J eight, the employment of certified personnel effective 2015-16 school year. You see that in front of you? Any questions? Five J eight, employment of certified personnel effective 2015-16 school year, superintendent recommends approval as stated in the agenda.
Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Five J nine, supplements. You see those listed? Any questions? Five J nine, supplements, superintendent recommends approval as stated in the agenda.
Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Before I move on to the last item, I want to recognize and congratulate Mike Smith for being approved by the board as our new boys varsity basketball coach at the high school. Congratulations, Mike. Welcome home. I think I have one more item. I'm not sure what that is. Five K, elementary, you follow elementary school principal. You see there, my recommendation. Any questions? Five K, elementary, you follow elementary school principal, superintendent recommends approval as stated in the agenda item.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
We want to welcome our newest administrator, James Johnson. Congratulations, James.
Thank you, sir.
We're all excited for you and look forward to your coming here.
Thank you. Thank you, board.
That is all I have.
If I can have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, extend the adjourn.